Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Twenty town planning commission please come to order. Welcome our group here this evening. Would you stand for the pledge of the flag, please? George, would you lead it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect the members that are here this evening. Commissioned members should have received the draft minutes for January 28, 2019. Any corrections or additions to this?
No, sir.
Now I hear a motion to accept.
Make a motion.
Okay. You second it all?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All those in favor of motion to accept the draft minutes of January 28, 2019, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Carrie, thank you. Action items for tonight is a request for site plan waiver, Memorial Park. Jim, you want to start us out on the gazebo?
Sure. Project is to install a 24-foot, I'll say diameter, although technically it's not round, it's an octagonal gazebo in Memorial Park. Mayor and council awarded the bid several months ago and the vendor is awaiting coming in to do a site inspection so that they can get, start planning out any site work that needs to be done and hopefully have the site work done by the time the building is manufactured by the, by polygon structures. It's a small project, just like we would have for somebody else doing an accessory building to a commercial use or a non-residential use that triggers the site plan requirement. But in this case, we've got no stormwater management, no erosion and sediment control, no grading, no traffic study, none of the stuff that we would normally look at for a site development plan. So it's a good candidate for a waiver, plus it's a city project. So rather than kind of go through the motions on it and spend the money to develop a site plan, where the city's requesting a waiver for it so they can just nail down the site and install the gazebo, just like we would, you know, a pavilion or a shed for the baseball program or something.
And the design fits into the surrounding, what's the purpose of it, right?
Well, it's probably a step, well, maybe a few steps above what else is down there. I mean, it's, you know, I guess they call it the neoclassical style octagon for the gazebo, whereas, you know, a lot of what's down there is just block pavilions and things with, you know, four-by-four supports. So it definitely does not match what's around it by any means.
So it's not an issue with the standards that we need to be concerned with?
I don't believe that this is within the Old Town area.
Okay, well then that takes care of the standards.
Yeah, that is, that is a good observation and something that I have certainly considered, in particular with this particular location, that it is different than typical concrete block pavilions that are down there in the park.
Okay. So the city is asking us to grant them a waiver for a site plan review. So I'll entertain a motion to that.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All the second, open for discussion.
Jim, is this going to be on the grass or is it going to be?
It'll have a concrete floor.
Concrete, just a diameter of the pavilion itself or?
So it takes, like each column has a footer and then the slab will be, you know, basically from the outer edge, I believe from the outer edge of each footer, so the outer edge of the footer will be even with the slab. I don't know if it's done as a monolithic pour or if they pour the footers separately and then do expansion joints around the slab, between the slab and the footer. I'm not sure exactly how they pour it.
Just curious.
And it will have, just for information, it will have outlets on, I think it's every other pole at like normal height and then there are going to be two up on the, on the inside of the white part there below the roof. That's called the tension ring on the gazebo. So there are, there are going to be two outlets up high on the inside, up under shelter as well, so that if there's going to, there might be lighting or something like that that would be, you know, tucked up in there, holiday lights or if, you know, some performance wanted, you know, overhead lights or something, that they'd have a power source up high for that as well. So we're hoping that'll have more than ample power for whatever might go on in there.
Do you know the distance between the gazebo and the backstop to the ball field approximately?
I would say it's 15 to 20 feet. It is, and Bob Mitchell advised that that field is used primarily for T-ball at this point. And when the mayor first proposed this location, I had a concern about foul balls and things like that, you know, so close to it. But it actually would be, you know, behind the field of play and behind the angled part of the backstop, so it shouldn't be within foul ball territory. Home plate should be set below the uppermost part of the backstop, so it should not be possible for a foul ball to go directly back and hit the gazebo.
Right, I'm thinking more of equipment that needs to access the other side of the ball field. You know, about twice a year, the baseball league comes in with pretty heavy equipment to work on all the fields and I want to make sure that it's, it's not going to be damaged by that.
We can, we can certainly fine tune it a little bit if we need to. Right now, there is a circle marked on the ground down there where, where the location is proposed. It's 10 feet off the blacktop path and then the 24-foot diameter, there's a arched painted state driven in the middle of the spot. So, but I'll certainly make note for that and, you know, if Bob feels like it should be pushed, you know, a few feet in, in any direction, we can certainly do that still.
And Jim, is this, is the goal, is this going to be a rentable pavilion like the others or is it a city, you know, function type thing? Is it?
At this point, I think the intent is for it to be used for, for the couple concerts that we do have down there and for, usually when we have events, there's some kind of entertainment, whether, you know, one year we did Carol's Idol, the Dance Studio usually will, or we'll put on a show or something like that when we have Harvest Fest or whatever events down there. So I think the idea is that that kind of thing can go on under the cover of the pavilion. Now whether we might want to also outfit it with, you know, have movable tables that we can put in there for rental, I'm not sure if that's part of the, the plan or not, but I guess there'd be nothing to preclude that if the mayor and council wanted to make it available for rental. I don't think that's the intent, though.
Gotcha, just curious.
In other words, are they going to be covered with some type of vinyl or is, or what's it made out of?
See, I didn't bring, I didn't bring the folder with all the specs. I believe the exterior is, is pretty much maintenance-free materials. The ceiling inside, though, is wood, so that will require painting periodically.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? If not, any comments from the floor? I'm not sure why you're here, but it's, okay. So the motion's been made and seconded to wa, to waiver the site plan requirements for the city of Tony Town on the gazebo. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it's Carrie. Thank you. Moving on, ordinance and agreements none. Jim, you want to go on with your report?
All right. Manoxi Cremation Services is still working, working through the site development process. We have received some additional approvals for, for the project and a couple were on the table tonight that came in. Actually, one that came in after the packets went out, one I forgot to slide in your packets. But we're still waiting for a handful more letters. I think we still need ADA approval and county development review. There may be, there may be additional ones, but those are the ones that come to mind off the top of my head. So hopefully those will come in and they'll be on the agenda for next month for approval. And as is often the case, we did not advise them upfront of waiving the preliminary plan approval, but this would be one where there's no, no public streets involved, no subdivision involved, so we could authorize the final at the same time.
Do it on one.
So we've done that on some other projects where they didn't have, you know, subdivision or public streets or anything like that. So just something to keep in mind when they come back. So they're still chipping away. Maryland Compassionate Care and Wellness, formerly known as KanaMD, is ready to build out the rest of the, the site. It looks like they, they had entertained doing rooftop HVAC units, but that is not the current plan. I'm not sure if the, if the roof structure could not support the, the units or exactly why, but they're going to have to be ground mounted like the ones that are already there for the first section they built out. And as you can see from, you know, the football field, those units are
Size.
Pretty big. So they are going to increase the impervious area. So they will at a minimum have to evaluate the existing stormwater facilities on the site to determine if that, you know, those facilities can accommodate the additional impervious area. They didn't have to increase anything, to my recollection, with the original site plan, but that site plan, keep in mind, was approved before their interior layout was approved. And there were some changes when it went from being KanaMD to Maryland Compassionate Care. And they had totally, you know, they basically totally redesigned the inside of the building. And, you know, we, we knew that the HVAC pads were not completely nailed down when we approved the site plan, but I think that the size of some of those pads did surprise us, so that's all going to have to be taken into consideration for stormwater when they, when they go to further increase the impervious area.
Well, the footprint of the building's not changing, right? Okay.
And it sounds like parking, they believe they'll be okay with the parking standard as well, because the, in the industrial district, the parking standard is one space per two employees on the biggest shift or the largest shift. And right now, they're only working one shift anyhow. And they have, they have that number of parking spaces for what they project their employee number will be when they build out. I've been at the site a couple times when parking was kind of scarce. So, you know, they're going to have to go through the site plan process and they may need to do something with stormwater anyhow, they may end up increasing the parking area or they may just reconfigure it to make more efficient use of the space they've got. So right now, it's not the best, I don't think it's the most efficient layout to get the most parking spaces for the amount of blacktop they have.
Did you count over like 35? Because I think they suggested their, their, what they suggested was going to be their employment when they opened. I had over 35 cars there about two weeks ago and I thought, I thought they were somewhere between 30 and 35 employees, so I think they must be moving on okay.
Yeah, and, and with the site plan, we'll get the, you know, the number of proposed staff for the increased, not really footprint, footprint because the building's already there, but for the increased, you know, interior build out. So, so that, that may be coming in the next couple of months. They, they did not have any drawings to even submit as a concept at this point. So of course, you know, when they come, they're going to be, they're going to be very, last time, I think we were very accommodating, understanding that they were under the gun in terms of the, the license application with the state and the timeframe, you know, that they needed to be up and running, you know, have, have product growing to meet the criteria for their license. So I think we were very accommodating last time and not that we won't be accommodating this time, but it's, it's not, we're not under the same kind of deadline that we were when they were applying for their initial license. So, so that's going to be coming our way hopefully in the next couple of months.
Can we stay on that just one, just another second longer? At a recent meeting that we had here, I heard some comments about noise and odors. Can you comment on that?
Other than I have heard a couple comments about the odor when, when exhaust fans come on, that people smell, and I, I haven't been there and experienced it firsthand, so I don't know if it's like an earthy smell or, or more from the plant itself, the plants themselves. But that's something that we can certainly address when they come back for round two.
That's what I'm thinking about.
They'll be doubling in size now, right?
Yeah, yeah, about that.
At least double.
Yeah, I think, I think the first phase only built out 30 to 40% of the footprint of the building.
They got a lot of building to double.
Yeah, and they have that, the whole, the whole clear span section, the, the last addition that was done to the building when it was ICEX, that, that part is still just completely open. Well, actually, they have a trailer that they had, like a C container in there that they had set up to be a temporary growing facility, thinking they might need to do that to meet the state requirements, to have, you know, something actually growing by the deadline. So they, now they're sort of faced with a dilemma of how to get that container out of the building because there's no overhead door in that back area. So if, if that's not part of their current plans, they'll be, I suppose, cutting a hole in the side of the building to get that container out of there. So, because it won't go back out the way it came in, so.
Two quick questions on that. Have, has the dumpster been addressed at all?
They, they modified their procedures to lock, lock the dumpsters, but certainly that's something we can revisit with, with the site plan, especially if they may end up doing something different with their parking lot. I know that the idea of it being kind of in almost a Sallyport, you know, was the original plan.
Right.
And then of course, when it switched to KanaMD to Maryland Compassionate Care, that got pushed off the table, so.
The other question is, has there been any additional talk about the boundaries of their property and how it relates to Memorial Park? Do you know what I'm talking about there?
Yes, yes. And there has not been. I don't know if, I don't believe they have acquired the property yet. They, they had advised that they've entered into a lease arrangement with option to buy, but how long they have to lease before they're eligible to buy, I do not know. But that would be the time for us to, you know, and certainly we can put it back on their radar screen. I mean, they know we're interested in, in acquiring a little bit more space for that, that last field. So we can certainly remind them that one's on forward with the site plan.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Meads and Meadowbrook are chugging away. We did another stick of townhomes for Meads. They've, they've started building, Meadowbrook has started building in phase five this month, so they're both chipping away at things. The Meads Crossing rear yard variance has been pushed back to March 5th. They were on the docket for the same evening as Tony Town Crossing, which ended up going until 12:30 in the, in the morning. So Meads opted to just reschedule for another date and March 5th was the first date that would accommodate the developer. So, so they'll be back in another week and a half, I guess. And that's, one other thing on the BZA front is that the BZA's reconsideration of the Blaine Mar case, the former sheet site for the liquor store, that has been appealed. It was done just a couple of days before the 30-day window, would have, would have passed on that. So we kind of expected that, that to happen, but the other two liquor stores basically are appealing that, the board's decision to rehear that case. So we'll be defending that. Jay may have some more to say about that. And that's about it for, for me this month.
Do you have any idea when Tony Town Crossing is coming before us?
No, no. And I don't know if they're waiting for the appeal period to end before they submit a concept plan or it's, and this is conjecture, but knowing that the owner of the property they were trying to obtain and didn't get a response from, that owner was here at the hearing and spoke in favor of the project, so I'm wondering if perhaps they may be in the process of acquiring that last piece of property that they wanted, which could change the, the layout of things a little bit. That's a possibility, or it may just be that they're waiting until the appeal, the appeal window passes before they take another step.
Staying on the same subject for a minute. The traffic study, it seems like there's never a simple ending result of the traffic study. When the guys come to explain it, I still don't know where we stand. I mean, we had the one up here at the square and then the gentleman the other night. So what did he actually say? Are we A, B, C? I know he said we weren't F. So, and did he take in consideration the Sewell property if and when that ever comes before us?
Right. He probably did not include the Sewell property because there's no, there's no plan in the works right now for it. Usually what they do when they talk about background, well, they look at the existing development, anything that's in the pipeline, so to speak, that is anything that's, that's gotten concept approval, that's going through the subdivision process or the site plan process, and they factor in the, the trips generated from those future uses to come up with the projected levels of service for the different intersections they study. We will have to get a copy of that study if, assuming the developer's willing to, to share it, and I would guess it would be in their favor to do so. But the project may not generate the number of trips to require one. I don't know what their peak hour trips are going to be. But I do recall from the Meads Crossing traffic study that the level of service at the intersection of 140 and 194 was projected to reach a failing level of service by the time Meads Crossing builds out. And the mitigation for that is to incorporate a turn lane at the intersection on York and Frederick Streets. So that will, that will require eliminating some parking spaces on street parking for both York and Frederick Streets. And we're hoping to develop another downtown parking site to offset that. But Meads Crossing's obligation basically is just to pay for the restriping of, of the, the intersection to accommodate the turn lanes, and that's projected to bring the intersection back to a passing level of service. So that's, that was the last traffic study that I've seen, you know, that had any detail on, on that. And of course, Meads also studied other intersections in the area and those were all passing without any question. So when they, when they come back, we'll have to try to get a copy of that traffic study and see the details and see, you know, exactly what intersections they studied, what their trip generation was. And I, actually, they may have, do you recall if they put that in evidence?
I think it's in the file, put in the file.
Okay. Yeah, so that's probably in the BZA file for it, so we can have a look at that.
How far ahead should we be planning as far as if Sewells come in or if they're even, if we're going to annex them? I mean, is there any type of requirements or conditions and, I mean, if something's going to be done to that intersection, we would, wouldn't we want to be looking at it now?
We'd probably want to look at it at whatever time we could get the developer to pay for the improvement.
So we would have, if, if we wanted to do, do another traffic study, the town would have to pay for it at this point?
At this point, yes, right, because there's no development pending that would sponsor the traffic study. So using Sewells as an example, their traffic study would come after their concept plan was accepted or, you know, approved and then distributed at the preliminary plan stage is when we would probably be looking at requiring a traffic study. And for a project of that size, you know, certainly there, there would be a traffic study in order. And I would imagine that they would look at, you know, 140 and Harney, 140 and 194, you know, how far east we would go, you know, if we look at Baumgartner and Roth also. I don't know if we'd be looking too much up York and Frederick Street for them or not, but I'm sure some traffic would, you know, would likely head those ways, but I don't know that we'd, I don't know that there are going to be any critical intersections, you know, up York Street or down Frederick Street that we would really worry about. We might look at Crousmill Road. You know, I don't remember what we had Meads look at.
It seemed like the traffic was the second negative impact
Yeah.
On that whole Board of Appeals.
Frederick Street gets hit hard in the evening.
Yeah, I mean, certainly during, during peak, I mean, peak hours for the intersection here, you know, kind of start, you know, between, I guess, 4, 4 and 4:30.
Three o'clock.
You know, is, is, it's, it's pretty busy well before 5:00 PM. Actually, I think it slacks off a little by 5:00 o'clock a lot of the days.
It goes on till 6:00.
It's still busy, but it seems like, it seems like York and Frederick kind of slack off by then.
Well, you're not backed up to Baumgartner Road almost.
So, so again, if we wanted to do a study before Sewells was in the pipeline, I think the city would have to, would have to pay for that.
Okay.
There might be other options, too.
As long as the city council's aware of, you know, that's, the traffic is, is going to be a main, major concern.
And that might be something that you're going to deal with in the annexation. Remember when we took in the Bean property? That he laid out to us what he wanted to build there. I forget what it was, but whatever it was. And that's what the annexation agreement envisioned and the zoning envisioned and everything was built on. This is what I'm going to do. That's not to say he couldn't change it, but if you did the same theory with the Sewells, this is kind of what I'm planning, you could almost say, well, we're going to need maybe a traffic study upfront to determine what the infrastructure needs are going to be based on annexing. See, that's the key, is that if you annex somebody in, they're going to build.
Right.
It can't stop. But you don't have to annex them in. So the threshold, we need a lot of information to cross that first threshold. The second threshold's too late then.
That's it, Jim, for me. Go ahead.
Okay. Don't really have a lot as far as other projects to update you on. Talk about the couple that have any news already.
There's, there's one small project that you see when you're coming into town from Littlestown. Malt Yard here in the middle of town.
Coming in from Littlestown?
Yeah, there's a sign down there at the Hitzman, but there's a malt yard that say here in town, right in the middle.
There's a, you know, Landscape and Supply has gone into
Is it there?
What was the, what was the Hovermail property, the old mill?
Right, that's right here.
Back along the railroad tracks. They were occupying an existing building and didn't do any development that would trigger the site plan requirement. So they're selling
They're, they're in business now?
Landscaping materials. I have not been out there to Landscaping materials, um, I have not been out there to take a look at the site, but um, they have applied for their uh, their county permits, um, those were issued, I don't know if they've gotten a use and occupancy yet or anything like that, but I know they did, they came in for their zoning per paperwork, and they did go to the county for the, um, for the tenant fit out paperwork, and um, I don't know if they're open for business at this point, though, but they have done all their, they've done their city paperwork to do so. So, and they came in shortly before the property was rezoned, as was done very recently from industrial to downtown business. So at this point, they would be considered a, an existing non-conforming use. If they were to expand, they would need to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals at this point, so, and the, the operator was aware of that when he came in because we had that zoning change pending for a few months, so, so that, you know, as I said, I don't know if he's open, but that is.
I don't either, I'm just, everybody's asking, and I don't know much about it other than the sign.
Is the sign in town or out of town as you're coming in?
The sign is right at the Hitzman, right before you get to the Burke House.
Okay.
The, remember the letter you got from Justin Watts about the um, buffer being increased to a hundred feet? Do we need to talk a little bit about that and Mead's Crossing? I mean, a hundred feet, that's a, that takes a lot of property.
It does. Um, we certainly need to talk about that when Mead's comes in for their next phase. At this point, there's nothing before us to review or to uh, require that, that buffer until they, until they come back with something that's gonna be along that.
Well, we require a buffer now, but that buffer's only, what, twenty-five feet?
Twenty feet is our minimum.
What is it?
We require them twenty feet.
Right, that's, that's what's in our code.
So do we need to look at our code, or?
Well.
Well, they gave us a code number.
Right, and that, that um, that has been on the books, I don't know how long, but I am not aware of any subdivision in the city that has done that. Creekside has property that's adjacent to non-residential, you know, other zones, and there is no permanent landscape buffer. Copperfield, Copperfield Overlook, Abut, Agland, and there is no twenty-foot buffer. It, it kinda goes on and on, you know, same Meadowbrook, now Meadowbrook is surrounded mostly by other residential developments, so that twenty-foot buffer wouldn't be applicable there, but there are, um, when plans were approved, there was some different zoning adjacent to them, and again, no twenty-foot buffer was ever required, so it's one of those things that's been, I don't know how long it's been on the books, but I don't know of an instance in the city where it's been applied. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it with Mead's, and Mead's is really the first subdivision that's gone through the process since I've been on board, so I can't speak to, you know, the, the office perspective of why not the others had it, um, but I, I know I was on the planning commission when, um, when Creekside was, no, maybe I wasn't on the commission then. I was on the other side of the table when, when Creekside was going through, um, but I don't know that, you know, from the non-staff perspective, I probably wouldn't have known to ask the question, um, so I, I don't know why we haven't, you know, why it's on the books and we've never implemented it, um, but, you know, Mead's could be, you know, that, as I said, it's the first subdivision that's come through since I've been working here, so.
Well, a hundred feet's two building lots.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot, that's a lot of ground they'd be giving up.
And I think that that's a little excessive, but I do think, you know, that we should, we should have the conversation at least for the twenty-foot buffer.
Okay.
That's in our own code.
Maybe I could see more of that if it's next to like a, a farm, like especially out there, because they're right up against the, the cattle and the barns and, you know.
With, with the preliminary plan that was approved, there are not that many lots that actually are adjacent to the dairy farm, um, there's, you know, as much open space adjacent to the farm probably as there are actual building lots. Now, in some spaces, that open space, you know, is like a little strip that goes behind the building lot, but again, if we're talking about maybe a twenty-foot landscape buffer, you know, that could be ten, you know, ten feet on the open space and ten feet on the building lot perhaps, um, but that is something that we should talk about when, when they come back in with their next phase.
I think we'd rather have to share that.
And um, just for your information from conversations with Steve Smith of Mead's Crossing, it sounds like he's already reached an agreement with the dairy farmer next door to plant some, some trees on the farm side as well.
He said he did it already.
Yeah.
They're in a meeting, one of the meetings.
Right, so that apparently since, since the month that, um, that the gentleman was in here with all the Fringer, or the um,
Angel.
Angel Road residents.
Right, yeah.
Um, you know, there's been some, some action, some movements happened already with regard to, you know, buffering for the farm use and things like that, so, um, you know, we can certainly talk about doing more when, when they come in for phase two, though.
Okay.
Oh, one last thing, Tannery Barn uh, came in to apply for their change of use from residential to commercial. So um, they are ready to start that process and design the sprinkler system and all that good stuff that they're going to need, so, so they are moving on that front now.
Is that it for yours then?
Yes.
Jay?
I guess mine is five G small cell update. So, I mean, we could talk about this in really in depth, but I'm gonna give you the forty thousand foot perspective and you can ask questions. So, we used to call it small cells, and we talked about what those were several times, that the small cell towers, they're not necessarily towers, they're antennas, and now the new language is five G, you know, like we have four G on our phone, this'll be five, fifth generation type of five G deployment. So, there's a conflict between the federal government, the state government, and the local government about how to regulate this, and right now, the federal government is winning, the FCC basically said there's only a limited amount of things, as we talked about in prior meetings, that local governments can do, and uh, there's timings for approvals, there's monies involved that you can't charge more than and, and things like that, and these are all on the public right of way, so this is not somebody installing it in their yard or things like that when you think of cell tower, these are along the public right of way, and the issue, if you put it down to nothing, is the companies that are deploying these wanna put them in the public right of way, don't really wanna pay for anything in the public right of way, and think they should just be allowed to do it because they kinda think it's good for all of us, and, and if you're a cellphone user, it is gonna be good for you because it's gonna provide more service and more connectivity and things like that, but the problem is, is how they do that without local regulation is the issue, because it could be right in front of your house window, it could be right, you know, where in subdivisions that we've already have all the things underground and all of a sudden a pole is coming up. So the FCC said there's certain things you can do, but you can't say you're not gonna have it, that's the bottom line, and so the local governments were told, this means us, that you need to develop an ordinance that's gonna just develop this, of how you're gonna regulate it, and you need to have the ordinance in place by April fifteenth of this year. If you don't have it in place by April fifteenth, there's no guarantee that if anybody comes to apply for permits afterwards would have to follow your ordinance, even if your ordinance is in conformance with the FCC. So we're working on that, and um, I'll just go with that thought right now. We're working on that, and there are so many different ways to skin this cat that you could just continually change and tweak the language. There's model ordinances all over the country, because it's an FCC regulation, about how people are dealing with it, so the best is, I've taken about five different models and put them to try to make, make the best we can, it might not be perfect, but at least it's something, we don't have anybody knocking on our door to do it anyway, but if we introduce this to the council this coming month, or next week in March, then you guys will have the official version that you can talk about, although it doesn't really go to you, it's not a zoning law, but you can talk about it because you all would be implementing that in site plans, because anybody who puts this would have to file a site plan and they'd have to follow those rules. You can talk about that at your March meeting, and then the council has to vote on it in April, if they don't, they might as well just throw it all in the trash and it'll be done. So that's the plan, it's kind of a rush thing, and when you start reading it, you'll realize it's one of those things where you just don't, you can't get your head around it, it's just stuff we don't normally deal with. To put the other spin on it is there, the Maryland Legislature has a bill pending, two of them, one is pro-industry and one is pro-local government, and the pro-industry says we're not gonna have any regulation by local government, more or less, and the local government one says we're gonna have regulation according to the FCC, because we know we can't do it. We won't know how that shakes out, haven't even had hearings on the bills, we won't even know, even if it passes, the end of the session is April sixth, I think, something like that, and it wouldn't get signed into law till July or October, so we have no choice, we still need to do our own, and then let the chips fall where they may. If the industry bill wins in Annapolis, it won't matter what we did because it'll be preempted and we'll be out of luck. So it's kinda depressing, the whole type of thing, because it's gonna make a difference for people in the fact that these cell towers are gonna be right in line with your second floor, okay, these are not like the big ones you see that are kinda up and out of the way, they're gonna be right here, they could be one on every block, they could be one provider on every pole on every block, but uh, that's what we're gonna do. So you'll see, uh, it introduced at next month's council meeting, come to you at the end of the month, then it'll be back to the council in April. I can ask you any questions, but probably, okay.
Guess we don't know enough to answer the questions.
I mean, it's interesting, if you wanted to be interested, but it, for our purposes, it's really about placement, design, aesthetics, how do they do that stuff? The money, the agreements and stuff like that are all interesting, but not really relevant to what we do here, so.
Jay, these will be additional poles, correct? Because at, at the second floor height, it's gonna be where the wire, you know.
Right, they can put, they can ask to put additional poles up, or they can locate them on existing poles, and then there's the move to co-locate on the same pole. So for example, Potomac Edison will let them put their antennas on certain poles, but not their, I don't know, it's like a cabinet.
Not the brains, yeah.
You know, it's a cabinet full of stuff, they won't let them attach that, so they wanna put that next to it. Well, can you imagine if you're the property owner, now you gotta mow around two things, I mean, it becomes a little bit more obtrusive. The bigger issues, if they put their new pole in, and let's say you limit it to thirty feet or twenty-five feet, you could have one of those everywhere, every so often, because you might be AT&amp;T and Sprint may have one and so on and so forth, and the concern would be, is if you own the pole and this technology goes away in ten years, what else can you mount on the pole if you got it out there? People are talking about, um, not automatic cars, but you know, automated.
Autonomous.
Yeah, that those poles could be converted to whatever they need to do those. I mean, we're eventually, remember, our goal was to have a nice streetscape, our goal was to have a clean, so that's the problem, you could have lots more coming up. Okay, if there's no more on that, I just can give you two other things, one, I follow up on Jim's thing about the appeal for the old Sheetz store, uh, yes, they appealed, we're in the very preliminary stages of that, and just so you can put your head around the timing, before we even ever get to the court part of scheduling a hearing, we're probably like six months out of posturing, meaning transcripts and memos and back and forth memos, and then there's a hearing, and then the hearing gets put in the normal court queue, so minimum nine months, that'd be the best, nine months. The action at the place is not stayed, meaning that they can still go ahead and build a liquor store, do their thing and everything, unless these people come in and try to go to the court and say we want that to stop, and then they have a hearing on that as well. The city's got, the city's in the middle, right, just where we always are, we're the bad guy, so the city needs to defend the Board of Zoning Appeals, which means I have to defend the actions of the board against the people who are appealing, and then there's the other parties who are kinda on our side, meaning the liquor store owner, but not really because they could break ranks with us and so it's a free-for-all type of thing. So we got that to look forward to, among other things. And then the last thing, I know last month you wanted to take stuff off your list, and we said we really can't take stuff off because it's still going on. Carol Vista, phase four, meaning Carol Vista's entire project is done, so we, I think we've seen that from the very beginning to the very end, and uh, you know, that's the first one that's gone through, at least while I've been here completely, so that won't need to be there anymore, we released their final letter of credit, and so, that's all I have.
That just brings up, Jim, where, where are we at with Lorian? Didn't we approve, form, and expand a kitchen or some other part of that building? Weren't they gonna build onto the back of the kitchen or something?
Yeah, just a storage unit, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Just putting another storage unit back.
Storage shed.
The last thing that came before us was for a shed, I think.
What happened to the kitchen?
Yeah, just a shed.
No, they were gonna do something with the kitchen.
No, I was hoping they'd do something so we could get them.
Okay, so you don't remember anything about that?
The last thing that, that we had from them was, was their sign, um, that went through, it went before the Board of Appeals for variance because it's big.
Right.
And then it came to you guys for the electronic message portion, um, that's, that's the last that.
Remember I said if they do something to the kitchen, I'll get a sidewalk, and they didn't do it.
Well, it's funny, because I asked them, I said, just the other, the other night we were out there, and I said, are you still planning on expanding the kitchen? And they said, yes, but we don't know when, so I thought, well, we did talk about the kitchen.
Well, the kitchen don't even work, hasn't worked for a couple of months, it's just now got the oven fixed.
The oven went in the day, but I'm talking about the kitchen being expanded.
Yeah, but they haven't.
Now, that's not what everybody else is thinking about?
No.
I don't recall any of it.
I, I do recall conversations about it, but I don't.
Okay.
I recall it, because I was saying we could get a sidewalk, but they didn't do nothing.
Okay.
It was a building, and you even said you can't do that, it's a building.
Okay, all right. Said it then, all right. Claire?
Sure, I have a couple of updates. Um, our, the water and sewer master plan, trying to update, was adopted by the commissioners last week, um, so that's being sent out to M.D., uh, it should be sent out this week or next week, um, they're just waiting on the resolution. Our waters, or our wastewater pedestrian master plan, um, the full document will be um, for our planning commission in, um, I believe, April, and then we'll start a sixty day review and then all the towns will be sent to the plan to review, um, in common room, and then we have had a little bit of shuffling around in our department, um, our acting director, Linda Eisenberg, was made director, um, we have a position, um, one of our planners was moved to a, a planning manager position, we've had two people leave, so there might be a little shifting in your liaison at some point in the upcoming months, so we'll see, we'll see, I'll keep you updated.
Or when she stops showing up, we'll know that there was a shift in the liaison.
Bobby Moser's still there?
Bobby is still with us, yeah, so.
All right, thank you. Any other business that needs to be brought before us? Sir, come to, state your name and address, please.
Josh Morningstar, thirty-six eighty-five Fringer Road.
Please talk into the mic, right?
I was just wondering if there was any updates on the planning of Ballinger Park or any, any news other than what was discussed?
No, Zara, not on this end, this, Jim, you have something to add?
Nothing new, uh, the engineer is, is starting work on the preliminary plan stage of the project, but um, we don't have any drawings or anything like that from them at this point, so it, it will probably be, I don't know if we'll have a preliminary plan by next month, uh, because this is the stage where all the heavy lifting is done, where the stormwater management and everything is designed, so that may take a few months before it comes back to us.
Okay.
George, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, so it looks like the next meeting will be March the twenty-fifth, so nothing else before us, I'll entertain a motion for. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Pose like, carry. Thank you.